I have this time. It usually takes us five.
Five minute breaks before we go into.
Okay, sure.
Yeah, exactly. Well, you'll be have the meeting ended before that. So it won't be anywhere else because it's not.
I better to be on the recording if we post the recording.
No, because the meeting will have been ended. And then at that point, when we end the meeting, it starts, it starts of just making the recording a whole package. So there's no more intake.
Okay, but we're doing an executive session, so when we stop recording, it ends, when we stop the record thing, it stops recording.
Yeah, we're gonna end when we end the meeting, it stops recording.
So do I stop recording?
Okay, but we were planning on keeping the two people who are online.
Oh, okay, yeah, you can stop recording.
If we just.
Thank you.
No, that's okay. Okay, no, we're, we're getting there. I think it's time for us to begin. Katie, if you want to call us to order, I believe we're being joined by our board chair. But he has asked that you run the meeting tonight. And I also want to just encourage you to check your email real quick. Okay, I sent you something. So please start.
Okay, so we're going to call the meeting to order at six oh five. And can I have a roll call?
Dan Murphy.
Steve Nelson.
Aaron Warren.
Katie Missel. Next on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay, we're gonna, Dan and I are gonna do it here. Come on, Dan, let's do the pledge allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, does, next on our agenda is the agenda review and approval. Does anyone have any comments, corrections to the agenda for Monday, October eleventh, two thousand twenty one?
I have none.
I don't have any.
I have no questions.
No.
So do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Make the motion.
Thank you, Dan. A second.
Second.
Thank you, Aaron. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So next, we're going to three point one. Nope. Three point two superintendent report, updates from Dr. Long.
Actually, I think we have consent agenda first, two point oh, two point one. We did the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, does anybody have any questions? That's actually what I meant about the minutes.
None for me.
None, yeah.
Dan?
No question.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the minutes for October eleventh, two thousand twenty one?
I'll make the motion that we approve the minutes.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, we're going to three point two, the superintendent report, updates from Dr. Long.
Thank you. In your packet, you see our monthly summary. It has the October enrollment. I'm pleased to report that we've continued to increase in our numbers. If you look at the lower section of that report, on the first day of school, we had a hundred and sixty two students. At the end of September, we had a hundred and eighty students. We, our current enrollment as of the end of October was a hundred and ninety two students. We're slowly inching our way back to that two hundred point. We're hoping we can get there. But we kind of added kids all across the board. We've lost a couple, one in ninth and eleventh grade, but everywhere else, we added one to two. And we just want to keep providing good service for our families and to try to grow our enrollment. So that's, that's the thing to celebrate these times. Couple other things I wanted to share with you. You may recall about a year ago, we received four grants from the state. They were grants that focused on radon testing, seismic assessments of our buildings, building a facilities assessment plan, which was about all of our facilities and where they're at, not just seismic, and then long range planning. Well, COVID kind of shut some things down for us, but I'm happy to report a couple of things. First of all, we will be moving ahead with the radon testing, which is a ten year requirement. And the grant will pay for that, and that will be occurring before December thirty first. The seismic assessments, we've been able to work with ZCS to add that on to our current contract with them, and they're planning, because they've already done much of that work for the high school and elementary campuses, to help us by assessing our NRC and our district office and have that done by the December thirty first. I contacted the state about the facilities assessment and the long range planning. And their recommendation was for us to release the funds back to them and then reapply in February. And they said because of our district being a rural remote district and some of the needs we have, that we're in the top tier of applicants for those grants and pretty much said that if we apply, we'll get the money. It's a better timeline for us to move ahead, so I did release those funds back to them. And we will apply. There will be an additional grant available related to asbestos assessment. We did go through all of that years ago, but I'm going to check with the state to see what we would need to do, and if so, there would be grant monies to pay for that. So wanted to let you know about that. That's really good news. We continue to have a robust elementary, middle school sports program right now. Boys are playing their first game and they probably finished it. Saint Mary's came up to give them a little challenge, and we, we had a full increment of, of young men who wanted to play basketball. They'll play into early December. And then we'll reload in January with a girls' middle school basketball program. We are assessing whether we'll be able to have a varsity basketball program or not. If we do, it most likely will be coed if we can pull that off. And there is an option for us to work with prospect on that, but we want to kind of see if we can have our own team first. It's awful nice to have something in town for our families and our students to, to come cheer for. Other exciting things that happened in October, we did complete this last week, nine weeks of everyday school for all children. We have not had to quarantine any of our grade levels at all yet this year. Really pleased with that, and that's been because of a lot of work on a lot of people's parts, including starting with our bus drivers who have hung in there and gotten our kids to school. We've been able to run regular routes most days, a couple of times when hunting season hit and a couple of things like that, we've had to make some alterations. They have been really helpful and cooperative in making that work. Secondly, our elementary classes have been able to get down to our natural resource center, which is the former Butte Falls Fish Hatchery that we've converted into an outdoor learning center. And twice a week, there's a different, there are two different grades that are down there, plus there's a contingent of students that work with Mr. DeCarlo on Tuesdays and Thursdays to help support that. Those are seventh, sixth and seventh grade students. And then Mr. Mathis has had some things going on down there, getting it ready. We're looking forward to opening up some things next spring for a lot of activity. We're offering a culinary arts class for the second term. The most recent project that they've completed was, we had a donation of some Concord grapes from down in the valley. Some people weren't going to harvest there, so they gave us a whole bunch of them. The kids are learning about how you make jellies out of grapes and how you make juice out of it. We had another donation of a lot of canning supplies and a pressure cooker, and so that's going to help us as they also finish processing some of the produce from the garden. So it really is fitting into the picture that we wanted of our kids preparing the land, growing the food, harvesting the food, processing the food, cooking with the food. That's, it's been exciting to watch that. Beyond that, the kindergarten, first and second graders, we were unable to go to the pumpkin patch down in the valley. So the pumpkin patch came to Butte Falls. I had five fifth grade students, no, seventh, seventh grade students come and help me distribute sixty one pumpkins on Macfield. And they decided to spell a message to the younger kids, so the words were boo, B O O with an exclamation point. And then we took a hike through the back way from the elementary school down to Macfield and just enjoyed, kids who'd never been that way before are out there, and their eyes just lit up when they saw the pumpkins out there. We took class photos. We had lunch down there. We had a picnic lunch. Kids got to play on the play equipment down there, and if they wanted to kick balls around, they were able to do it on the softball field. And then we got to, everyone got to go race and get a pumpkin, and then they were spent the afternoon decorating. So it was a lot of fun that week. A lot of spirit in all of our grade levels. It was Spirit Week at the high school and the elementary school. I have never seen the level of participation like we had this year. Everyone, everyone wore costumes, had fun, laughed a lot. And it was a great week. It was unfortunate that Halloween was on a Sunday night because it kind of made it a tough morning for some of our kids on Monday morning. But we got through that, and I think those are the things that help build a community, a school into a community. And lots of good memories were made. So I wanted to give you those as updates of things that are going on. There's lots of other stuff, but that's just a nice thumbnail sketch of, of some fun stuff and good learning. Any questions for me about anything from operations of the school this, this last month? Okay.
On our enrollment, it looks like the high school and elementary numbers got reversed, just so you guys know.
Oh, you're right. The column's down there. Yep.
But I actually, everything you're saying just sounds awesome, in particular, the outdoor learning and the cooking and gardening for the kids. I have three kids in the school. Looks amazing.
Well, and I'll just add this, our sixth and seventh grade teachers have been creating like monthly electives and kind of a rotating wheel on this one. Mr. DeCarlo was doing some things with, one day a week, they split into three groups, and on one day, a third of them do an activity around science with him or outdoor learning. And then there's a second day, there's a potential for a study hall for them to spend some time making sure they're caught up. And then the third day, there's a, there's a little cooking class that the sixth grade teacher's doing in her room. Some of it's no bake cooking, just a variety of fun things. And then for those kids who really like cooking, there's a bonus lesson the fourth day, and for those kids who like the science, there's a bonus science thing. And for those kids who really would benefit from study hall for another day, they're getting that. So we're really having kind of a mini middle school, explore a lot of different things, and they'll be resetting the electives each month with different things for the kids to do.
When I have a child in the middle school class and she's having fun and she brought home the no bake cookies and was sharing them with her sisters, it was awesome.
Yep.
Any other questions, women? Okay, so we're going to go to three point three, review of the payment of our bills. Does anybody have any questions about bills?
And Rachel has her mic on, so she can answer anything you ask.
I do.
I don't have any questions about the bills.
Aaron, do you have anything?
No questions here. Thank you.
Steve?
No.
Okay, Dan, I think you're up.
Page one. Calculated comfort. Eighty seven hundred.
That was the install and the purchase of the heat pumps at the elementary school. I believe they went into the, the two classrooms that are, is it a modular that's out there?
Yeah, our heating system went down and we got those hooked in. They had one day of very cool classroom, so they were very appreciative when the, when the electrician hooked those up that night. So we got heating and they have air conditioning in there in the spring, so good deal.
All right. Page two. The first one is Sipa filter for twenty three hundred.
That is our website filtering system for the district so that people cannot misuse the internet and it allows them to block certain pages.
Yeah, every one of our students, I think in grades two on up, have a Chromebook, and this allows us to provide protection when they're using our equipment. And it also on our computer system, so it's all of our systems, so people don't go where they should go on our systems.
Right, gaggle net down in the middle of the page for thirteen hundred.
And that's the email filtering, so it helps to filter the spam emails and the emails that are not good. So we, that's an annual fee also.
All right, page four. Question, just generally, the town of Butte Falls and the security system service. Now, the officer is gone, are we, what are we paying for?
That's the remainder of his contract that we had through, they're, they're not month for month billing. They back bill us. So that's the remainder of the contract that we owed for it.
Because he left at a, at a weird time in the contract here, so we, we had to pay off the residual for the fraction of time that he still worked.
Yeah.
But when he was gone, we won't have to pay him, though, will we?
No, I think we're done with that.
Correct.
Okay. Repairs and maintenance down at the bottom for thirty five hundred.
And that's, that's, that's a US bank charge. It's, it's various things. Um, I, it would take me a few minutes to pull those, I specifically, just because they all roll up under the same thing, but it's not any one item. Did you want me to find that information for you, Dan?
No, that's fine.
What I can tell you, Dan, is that's even like for, for, we're doing a project and, and I, on the way home, I stopped at Ace and picked, I picked up a little, we had a plumbing issue outside, so I picked up the plumbing parts, and I just put it on the credit card. It gets charged to this account. And then the next time I come up, I bring them up here and I fix them. So Chase and I repaired a water system, so it's things like that.
Okay. Page six. Dell for thirty five hundred.
That's the second part of the computers that we ordered in our August. So because of supply chain, they're coming in stages, and this is the second set that, from the order that we placed in August.
Okay, now, US Cellular at the bottom has internet service here too, as well as Hunter.
They have phone service, I believe. Do we have some?
It said internet.
Oh, I'm just looking for which number. Are you on page five or four?
Six.
Six, okay.
It's at the bottom of page six.
I see it there.
Let me double check on it. Hang on just a sec. I think it's just the way that the.
Is that the nine hundred and sixty six dollars? Is that hotspots?
Those are hotspots, I believe. Yes, actually, I know they're hotspots because of what they're coded under. They're coded under S R. So those are the hotspots that we provide through US Cellular for our families that cannot connect through regular internet.
That allows them to use their Chromebooks at home if they're up in the, in the hills but have cellular access.
Rachel, and not too long, that concludes my comments and questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from anyone else?
No.
Okay, so we can move on to three point four, the financials. Rachel.
So I just want to let you know that we received, so based on our enrollment, I did an updated estimate of membership and revenue, reducing our student count. What this does is it will allow us to receive smaller state school fund payments for the remainder of the year. And so that in May of the following year, we don't get hit with a, an adjustment where we have to pay the state back. What happened with that is that I was not the only one that did that in the state, and there's a decline of over seventeen thousand students across the state. So it actually adjusted everybody across the board. And what, and what that ended up doing was it ended up causing us to get an increase in our state school fund of seventy two thousand dollars, but we are held harmless for a year, so the ADM that they're calculating us on is last year's ADM. So we want to make sure that, um, we're not going to acknowledge that we're receiving that seventy two thousand, because what happens is, is that if our ADM does not go back up to where we were in twenty twenty one, we will have to do an adjustment in May of twenty twenty three. So right now, um, it will look like we're getting more, but because of our student count, we really want to be cautious with the amount of money that we're spending, because by all rights, our student count and our enrollment is low, so therefore our state school fund's going to be lowered. And the difference in the ADM of what they're holding us harmless for is about thirty six students, so we're being counted at the thirty six additional students right now. And so if we don't get our additional, that additional ADM by the second quarter reporting, then it'll end up becoming an adjustment in May of twenty twenty three. So we just want to monitor that and be careful with that. So with that in mind, when I start doing budgeting in January and February, if our student enrollment hasn't gone back up, I will be budgeting on a deficit amount of what the state school fund says, because knowing that I'm going to have an adjustment. So I just want to keep you in the loop of where we're at with that right now. And we have moved some funding around so that we are able to keep some positions in play. And in January, early February, when I actually get the twenty two, twenty three state school fund estimate, then we'll be having some different conversations about where we're at and where we're going to land.
Rachel, can I interject something here?
You sure can.
So, so the board knows, and actually so our community knows. Every district in Oregon receives some federal funds for elementary and secondary school recovery, S R funds, they're called. And it's the third phase of those, and what came to us was five hundred thousand dollars for three years. And it's to use, it's, the purpose was to reduce class size, to provide extended learning. There's a variety of things to meet to help mitigate the impacts of COVID on, on kids and, and in our schools. So we had to submit a plan, and our plan, because we saw our precipitous drop in enrollment, we focused on staffing, because if we had reduced, if we had adjusted our staffing to match what our student enrollment was going to, was at the beginning of the year, we would have had to cut numerous positions. So we took half the S R fund for this year, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we're paying for all of our online stuff that we're doing for online families, and we're paying for the online instructor out of that. And then I identified an elementary teacher and a secondary teacher, and we're paying their salaries out of those S R funds, because we would have had to cut those positions otherwise. And then we're also paying the salary of one classified employee aid. Those would have been what we would have needed to reduce if we were trying to balance our budget at the beginning of the year. And the reason why we argue we can do this is because it actually accomplishes what S R said as one of the primary goals, which is to maintain good, a class size support for students who need more support. So essentially, you could think of, we subtracted staff out because our enrollment was down, and then we added staff to better improve, to improve the student to adult ratio. And that is how we're, this year, we're going to pay for all of our positions, no matter where enrollment comes out. What that means is, if our enrollment does come up this next year, that money is general fund money that falls over in our carryover to help us next year. Had we not done that and used the S R fund for other things, what Rachel talked about in terms of the impact on our general fund, we would be making, we would, we would have to make cuts at the beginning of next year. We may still have to do that, but we'll be in a better position as we build our budget to see what our enrollment's to. So I just wanted to be clear, we invested those federal dollars in people who could serve kids, and it allowed us to re-keep our staff whole, so we have a teacher at every grade level. To cut staff probably would mean I'd have to have blended classes, and we want to grow our school, not be, be shrinking our school. So, so that's the plan with those funds. Had we had our enrollment, we could have invested in other ways. But I think at this point, this is the one that meets our goals of sustaining stability for our school and for the families we serve. Anything else, Rachel, or is that it?
Nope, I had to be the bearer of bad news this month, sorry.
Actually, Rachel, I do treasury for the town, and I super appreciate you watching a potential loss for us and keeping an eye on that and adjusting our spending. And thank you, Dr. Long, for the updates on the funds. Any other comment?
No.
Okay, so we're going to go to three point five, the charter school staffing updates with Dr. Long.
You know, we've continued to try to find people who can help us. We haven't had any candidates for the facilities manager position. However, I am really grateful that Jeff Gorman has been willing to come back part time. He, he already has fixed some things that we needed real attention for, repaired some doors, and he's helping me go through to do an inventory of everything to really make sure that we're prepared for our next facilities manager. He's also helping me make sure we've outfitted the, the district truck with the trailer and the equipment stuff, storage that we need for that to serve us for many years. And so at this point, I have extended the posting for the facilities manager through December thirty first. I've had some conversations with the Classified Association about changing the structure of that so that we might be able to attract different candidates to that, you know, adjusting the, the salary and a few other things, maybe making it a supervisory position. And so we're going to continue to have those talks too. At this point, our custodial is being supported by existing staff who were extending hours to have them help. Hired a couple temporary people to help us out. I think I mentioned in the last meeting several of those people. We have not, we've had several applicants for the interim principal position. I'm reviewing those right now. I'm not sure, given the support that we're getting from Diane Gorman and just where we're at, it, it, it may be worth just waiting and reloading to, to hire a new principal for next year and doing that in the spring, but I just have to see, if I get the right candidate, I'm going to grab them and, and go with it. So I just want to let you know about that, and I'm trying to think of, I think those were the key positions that we're concerned about. We were, I did sign an agreement with the Grants Pass School District, today will provide training for anyone that we need to be trained as a bus driver. They have a little more bandwidth right now than our, than our neighbors Eagle Point, and Eagle Point has been wonderful to work with. They just need all their people focused on driving kids to school right now. So doing some things around the, the margins to, to keep us going forward and prepare for next year, and I just want to do a shout out to our bus drivers who are hanging in there with us. I really appreciate that.
Does anybody have any questions?
No.
Okay, so we're going to move on to the site cancel, parent involvement with Julie Freeman. Three point six.
Hello, so let's see, we, I have submitted the title budgets to O D E, and mainly it's going to be used for staffing. And they have been approved for this, this year and waiting till November fifteenth to submit our carryos, carryovers, which will also be used for staff. And waiting until November fifteenth to submit our carios, carryovers, which will also be used for staffing purposes. That's it.
Thank you, Julie. Does anyone have any questions for Julie?
No.
Okay, so three point seven, the Butte Falls Community School Partnership, Mr. Murphy.
The information of the Community School Partnership is in the bulletin. And it gives you a pretty good idea where we are and what's going on over there. And I'd recommend you read that.
Thank you, Dan. Does anyone have any questions?
No.
So do we have any public attending? Three point eight.
We do not at this meeting, though. We did not have any inquire. I will note that this is being recorded because we were not able to get the live stream going, so this will be posted after the fact. But I did not have anyone contact me to talk to the board.
Okay, so if anybody who listens to this later has questions, they should.
They should email us at feedback@beautefalls.k12.or.us. And I think that's available on the, on the web too.
Perfect. Do we have old business four, four point oh?
I don't think we have anything on the plan there, so.
Okay, so we're going to move on to five point one, SIA Annual Report.
Yes, and I'm going to give you an oral report on this. The SIA is the Student Investment Act. That was funding that the legislature authorized, not this last year, but two years ago in their previous session. Focusing on additional monies that could be targeted at improving student success. And so we were required, having required to make a plan and then update that plan. You may recall, we had a number of, of meetings with parents. And we surveyed our parents, we surveyed our students. To try to find out what are the areas that we could target that money, and, and we built our plan around that. And so we have submitted on, on the next go-around, new biome of our plan. We are focusing on many of the same, similar things around counseling. Some additional staffing support is funded through that too, in terms of targeted interventions for students, help with reading and math. Some safety things for our facilities are funded through that. That's another concern that the state has, that students are in a safe environment. And so the update that I wanted to give you, and there is more information available on our website about what we submitted. But I just want to let you know we're progressing to use that funding. I'm especially pleased that it's funded this year. Because with all the things that have happened the last couple of years, the state many times will start an initiative, and then suddenly we don't have money. But clearly, the revenue was such that they can fund it.
So if I wanted to read what we submitted for the SIA, I would just go to the website?
I believe there's a posting on there, a, a link on the, about us. And I don't have my computer in front of me, but you can click on that, and then it would be one of the items down that dropdown. And it's been updated.
Perfect. Anyone else have a question?
No.
So five point two, Division twenty-two Assurances Report to the Community.
Each year, the superintendent needs to give a report to the board and the community. And it's, there's a series of things in, in state regulation, chapter five eighty-one, twenty-two. Called the Division of Standards for Public Schools. And in your packet, and this is also on our website, we actually posted this. We're supposed to have it posted by November first. It is my, my summary report on where we stand relative to the standards. There were two standards that we were not compliant in. Fortunately, we have a plan to be compliant on them. One of them is on the third page. Wait, I got to find it here. Yes. On the fourth page, page four, and it's under a Healthy and Safe Schools Plan. And it's the radon testing. We originally had planned to do that last December, a year ago. And things, COVID conspired against us, and so we're taking care of that. And that's, we're supposed to provide a corrective action plan, and I provided that. It'll be completed by December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one. And then the other area that we were not compliant in, I don't know of any districts that were compliant in it, and that's on page six. And that's the required instructional time. As you recall, we had a wildfire go through our district, and we lost a couple of weeks of schooling. Though we did make up some of those days. And then we had distance learning well till, till March, I believe, and then it was kind of a hybrid schedule. And so we did not have the onsite, we did not meet the onsite regular instructional time. We met the guidelines from the state on what we needed to do last year, but it did not meet what is there in statute and in regulation. And so we built our calendar this year and our schedule to meet those requirements. And right now, after a quarter, we're on schedule to do that. So, so that's, that's the state of, of our compliance with the state requirements for public schools. And this is the official report. It will be noted in the minutes. And I will be sending a copy of the draft minutes along with this report to the state. I must file that by November fifteenth. Some of you may be saying, wait a minute, why is this happening now? This used to be a January thing. And the state changed the timeline around this. To have a November reporting period, I think to actually make it a little closer to the previous year. So that's what we're doing. Any questions on anything?
No.
No, I'm okay. Anyone else?
No questions here.
Okay, so we could go on to five point three, the OSBA LPC Position Election.
In your packet, I believe you have some information about these Oregon School Board Association positions. And the, for our region, they're open and for the. Policy Committee, trying to think, the Legislative Policy Committee. And for our region, we're in Region Five, so the, the Legislative Policy Committee, Position Five. There are two candidates for this, Sarah Crawford of the Phoenix Talent School District and Ray Williams of the Prospect School District. And. I, we, we can vote on, I, I think we probably want to make our selection tonight so that we can report it out. We could delay it till your December meeting if you wanted more time. These people represent the school boards in their region on this state committee that makes recommendations regarding legislative policy. Any questions?
So we have to choose tonight, Sarah Crawford or Ray Williams?
Yes.
Anybody have any thoughts?
You can nominate someone and vote on them, someone can make a motion.
I vote for Ray.
I vote for Ray Williams too.
I vote for Ray Williams.
So could we have a motion in a second?
Okay, do we have a motion? It seems like there's consensus here to vote for Ray, Ray Williams.
Dan made the motion.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four votes, yes, for Ray Williams. I will report that out to OSBA.
Thank you, everyone. So we're at five point four, Resolution twenty-two oh one and twenty-two oh two. Ruby and Cecil donations, they donated to the town too. Okay.
You know what? This is just a remarkable gift to our district, in part because it's a continuing gift. As you all know, if you've lived here for a while, I've only come to know Ruby and Cecil the last five years. But they have been involved in this community and supported not only with money, but also their time and energy for decades. Alongside this, they also have made a gift of a thousand dollars to the Oregon Community Foundation. To our elementary to support swimming lessons or similar type activities for our elementary kids. So what we have here is we have two resolutions. One of them is a contribution from Ruby Edwards and Cecil Bailey, and the amount of twenty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. For purposes of student enrichment, and that is to the district, to Butte Falls School District, Jackson County School District ninety-one. Then the second resolution that you'll need a separate action on is a donation of twenty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. For the purposes of student enrichment at our Natural Resource Center. And if you know anything about Ruby and Cecil, they are delighted to help us. But what they want is, they want to see kids working alongside however this money is spent doing things. So it really makes an impact, not just for kids, but with kids. So I'm presenting these to you. I think we need a motion on Resolution twenty-two oh one, and then Resolution twenty-two oh two. You'd vote on them separately.
Hold on, I gotta, I have a few questions. What, what's the money going to be spent on, and what does student enrichment mean?
I agree.
You know, they have given us some latitude on that. What, what, what they have done, and I'm meeting with them again tomorrow for a little more clarification of some of the things we can do. But I think what they're looking at is things that would enhance the student learning experience. Either within our school district or down at the Natural Resource Center. And they specifically separated those out because I said, you know, we will be accountable for things that the district uses it for. And then we'll be accountable separately for the Natural Resource Center. But they want to see these, our program move forward. And, and they're at a point where they're trying to make investments that will endure. And they, I was just delighted to chat with them and hear that they are confident that by doing this publicly. With the, with the focus on student enrichment, it isn't just paying the bills. Isn't, they don't want us using it to, to do stuff that we're supposed to normally do. They want it to enhance our program.
Yeah, they're very much for children.
Yeah, so Katie, I had a conversation with Mr. Bailey a couple of weeks ago. Actually, while I was in Wisconsin, I had a conversation with him. Basically, what he's, he's wanting to do, or what they're wanting to do is that. So for an example, is instead of hiring someone to come in and rake the leaves. Or do a garden or something like that, they're asking that the students be provided with the tools and resources. To be able to do that themselves. So it goes really well with the food forest, goes really well with our garden elementary. Or the elementary garden that we have. So those are the types of things that they're looking for. And we specifically put the money into its own bucket per se. So that that can be monitored and be reported as needed, whether it be to Ms. Edwards and Mr. Bailey. Or if it be that the school asks for that, we can specifically identify those funds and what they were used for.
Now, are we going to have a different place on our budget to, I mean, in, obviously, in natural resource? Is there going to be a different way to account for the expenses for this donation?
Yes, but you won't see it, and the reason why is because all of those expenses are rolled up in the Fund Two Hundred. So this fund is a Fund Two Oh Three, and what it does is it has what we call a drag number. So the very last digits of the whole account stream identify it as that particular donation fund. So it's not, you guys won't be able to see it in the, in the whole of the picture. But we can identify it on Julie's side, the secretary's side, and my side. And I am more than happy to provide a report at any given time with the specific information on it.
I anticipate we'll be giving them a fairly regular reports on, of accounting, and it will track. And so the money is in that account. Expenses may get paid on a credit card or whatever, but we'll, we will document what they're for. And then they would be billed, billed over to that, so that, that would pay back the money that we had used general fund for, for those, those things. And that's how we're going to account for it. And I told them that I totally appreciated their investment. And, and as we do with all of our expenses, but in this case in particular, we, we just want to, want them to be confident that we will be accountable for the funds to them.
Okay, so you guys are definitely going to make sure to follow up with them that we're using it the way they anticipated.
Yes.
Okay, does anyone else have any other questions?
No.
Do I, do I have a motion to approve Resolution two-two oh one?
I'll make the motion.
My second.
All in favor? Aye. Do I hear a motion to approve Resolution two-two oh two?
I'll make the motion. We approve two-two zero two.
My second.
All in favor? Okay, so thank you, Ruby Edwards and Cecil Bailey.
Yes, and those were unanimous votes. Thank you for the unanimous votes.
Okay, so we're at six point one, Elijah Bowers is going to do the middle school basketball coach.
Yes. And Billy Myers is going to, actually, there should not be an E in there, it should just be M-Y-E-R-S. It will be his assistant. Those are extra compositions. So I think I need your action on that.
Do I hear a motion for six point one to approve Elijah Bowers as our middle school basketball coach?
Motion's nominated. My second.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye. Do I hear a motion to approve Billy Myers as the middle school basketball assistant coach?
I'll make the motion.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we're at seven point oh, comments, future agenda items from the board.
Can I interject something? I'm not on the board, but I work for you all.
Thank you.
We were, have worked with OSBA to review all of our policies. And we're now at a point where we can come back and start bringing their recommendations for policies to you. And I think we want to start that process with some policies coming to you at your next board meeting. I'm wondering if we could sort of reconfigure that, the committee we had. I don't know, Steve, would you be willing to help with that process?
I can try.
Okay, I, I, I know you have a little bit of time and on your hands. And my, my thought is, Steve, I don't know if another board member, what we've, what we've tried to do is to have one or two board members meet with me. And review the proposals from OSBA, make sure they, they're understood. And, and put them in a form that would fit what we do, and then they would come to the board, and then you have a board member expert on the policy.
There would be a link to the old stuff. I, I could help.
I could try to help too, Dr. Long, and Steve, you look great.
That would be terrific. Okay. Y'all okay if I work with Katie and Steve on those?
Yeah.
And I know it's more than a comment, but I needed to get that out there. We need to get back on track with board policy.
We really do.
I'll take that as a direction from the board then. Thank you.
I, I, I would agree, it's a direction. We really need to update our policies. I knew that a few years ago. Does anyone on the board have comments?
No.
No comment.
Aaron?
I have a comment. I just want to thank Dr. Long for keeping the ship sailing. Sounds like we're understaffed and some vacancies. And, you know, I don't know that you wanted to work this much, Phil, but I appreciate your efforts and your commitment to this school.
You know what? This is, this is a great town and a great district. And what I, my goal is that kids don't realize that we're understaffed. I want them to have the best education they can get here, and I'm seeing staff members step up in ways which, which quality people do in hard times. So it's a privilege to work here. I appreciate the appreciation and. Had found, explored a new, a few new aspects of this operation that I hadn't been acquainted with before. I think today it was when the toilet overflowed in the first grade classroom, and we had to do a little work in there. So we're just, we're just pulling together and getting stuff taken care of.
You know, Liz didn't even say a word to me about the toilet overflowing. You guys must have kept that hidden.
What, you know, they, they went to the library and they went outside, and when they came back, there were three rugs missing, and it was all clean and sanitized. So there you go.
She never said a word. And, and I completely agree with Aaron. You're. And, and I completely agree with Aaron. You're doing an amazing job. So is our staff. I have three kids in the school and, and they're having a great year, masks, no masks, all that. Um, you guys are doing a really good job.
Appreciate the, the support from parents.
Any other comments?
No.
So I guess we, we, Dr. Long, are we just pausing our regular meeting to go into, um, an executive session or are we adjourning?
You know, we are basically going to, we're going to adjourn at the very end, but the last item is an executive session. So, uh, the board will not be conducting any additional business, um, a- after this point. And so I think what we can do is we will end the recording. We want to thank people who spent the time to observe the meeting. And if you have any feedback to the board or to the administration, you can certainly contact us via phone or email us at feedback@buttefalls.k12.or.us. And, uh, we're always looking for ways to make things work better. So we're going to end the recording here. When we finally have that done, then we'll, uh, continue with our executive session and we'll let you know.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Dr. Long.